Cross come to church, Mr. Bailey, sir. Floor is yours and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's all pray. Heavenly Father, we've come before you this evening. God, we pray that you'll guide this city council of Lono. Bless these men and women, Lord. Help them to make the right decisions. God, let us not lean to our own understanding, but seek your Holy Spirit to guide and direct them. Lord, God, we pray that you'll bless Lono. Let it prosper. Let it be a great success in this city. God, we pray for this great nation that we are part of. Pray for the leaders of this country. And God, we pray that you bless our president for the next four years. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you guys would, please turn your microphones on. Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Philip Powell?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Cordell? Mrs. Bridges?
Here.
Mrs. Elmore?
Here.
Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Hatton?
Here.
Mr. Florence? Mr. Butler?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. City council packets were made available for pickup last Thursday as everybody had an opportunity to review their packet and the meetings, the minutes from last city council. All right, if everybody has, then we'll take a motion to approve last minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve, approve last month's minute.
Second.
Mr. Bailey's second. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She carries. Now, we're gonna open the agenda up with Mr. Lingo. Mr. Jeff Lingo and Jacob Taylor are here. They've got a presentation they put together and we'd like to discuss, uh, our new, the new sidewalks are going down Lincoln Street. And so, Mr. Lingo, what I've done is put your PowerPoint presentation here. So you just tell me when you want to slide and we'll roll with it, okay?
All right. First time here, this is where we go, I said?
Yes, sir. Is that microphone on? Do a quick tap on it, you'll be able to hear it. I gotta hit, some say yes, some say no.
Like Mayor said, my name's Jeff Lingo. I'm here with Grace and Jacob Taylor. We own adjacent properties on Lincoln Street between Palm and Maple Street. First, let me tell you, this is not a speech of bashing sidewalk. I think the sidewalk is a great thing. I see a lot of people using it, so I applaud you guys' efforts for doing that. One of the things too is that the mayor's been very helpful anytime I call. He's returned my calls, so he taught me off the edge one time, so I appreciate that as well. But again, we want to talk about basically three things. One is the lack of robust communication process, drainage issue on Lincoln Street, and the contingency and maintenance process for the new sidewalk. What you see here, it's hard to see, but the red outline boxes, there's a number two and there's a small footprint there. And that's my brother's footprint when he was two years old. He's now fifty-six years old. That had been in that sidewalk for, I mean, in my driveway for fifty-plus years. Mine was right next to it and it's gone now because the concrete was cut. And I didn't know anything about it when the sidewalk was gonna be started. Hopefully, we could've moved that over. Now, did the sun come up the next day? Yes, it did. It's not a huge deal, but it was a neat thing for me. And again, to the next slide, please. I'm using the mayor's words here. Everyone has something on their property that has meaning to them. And that's the beauty about living in a small town. I lived here for, my family's been here for over a hundred years. I lived here, my son lives here currently, and hopefully, one day, I'll move back here. But those things are really what makes a small town really great, the little things. I talked to six property owners on Lincoln Street and not one of them knew anything about the start of the sidewalk project. And again, this is not a bash. It's just the communication vehicle needs to be a little bit more robust. That's all I'm saying. Uh, the demographics of the community is not familiar with social media and I fall into that group. I'm not that great with social media, getting better at it. My granddaughter's teaching me more than I ever thought she could, but uh, just keep that in mind when we start talking about communication. Nothing works better than a knock on the door and say, hey, guess what's fixing to happen? Next slide, please. Uh, the sidewalk, the only negative thing I'm gonna say, it's intense and already four drainage condition. Condition. And I know that all over Lono, there's poor drainage. We all know that. Uh, the ditches on Lincoln Street do not drain. The culverts are clogged, they're not functioning properly. As you see here on this first picture, the two red lines are Mr. Taylor's driveway. During a heavy rain, which these pictures were taken during that, and it's spring in Arkansas, so we're gonna get some more. There's three to five inches of water right there in his driveway trying to get in. Uh, the red house and the white house is his house and my house. There's a huge flow of water coming between the properties, which comes, drains most of the block. And we realize from our property to the drain, it's our responsibility. But it's foolish for us to spend money on this current time because it's not going anywhere. So if you look at the other slide, that's my heat and air unit where water is almost all the way into it. And I'm having foundation issues. I got a crack in mine now and I think Jacob mentioned he has one in his. So, next slide, please. If you're looking at this, this is one of the properties that I own on three thirteen, looking back south toward Palm Street. And what you see is the ditch on the east side is full. The one on the west side is not. Water is actually flowing back across the sidewalk and then it becomes like a dam where you can't escape and get to the, uh, the ditch. And the mayor has agreed to look at putting cut throughs there to help drain the problem, but again, we're still, that one slide on the far right, you can see the little bubbling down at the bottom. That's water actually going under the sidewalk. And anybody that's lived in a frame house knows that water going back under a frame house is not a good situation. I'm redoing that house. I've already spent roughly seven, eight thousand dollars on it and I don't want to keep putting money in if we can't get that problem solved. The picture in the middle is on the north side of the driveway and it's like a lake. And the drain has already been put in there, so we'll see how it works. Next slide, please. What you see here, the red areas indicate where those two culverts are there in the other two pictures. You can see the elevation on the one, on the up corner, the left-hand corner, there's hardly no water coming through and there's not a siphon effect on this side. Well, that red area on the bottom goes to the middle picture, which is a twelve-inch cover, which is not gonna take that much water for the amount that goes through there. And on the other side, the elevation, it goes all the way on out to seventy, which looks like it's adequate enough if the water goes through like it's supposed to. Next slide, please. So that, bless those covers that you saw, when it dried up, I took a flashlight, I looked up in there. That cover that drains the majority of the water off of the east side of Lincoln is clogged. And you can see it's pine needles, cones, whatever it is. But there's even gonna have to be a more frequent clean-out process, especially with all the new construction going on. Silt and stuff's gonna become worse. What we'd really like to see is a larger cover put in there and one put in down between Jacob's property and mine because there's just nowhere for all the water to go. But the ditches on the school side are virtually, they're not even close to what you just saw in the previous slide. Next slide, please. The last point we wanted to talk about was contingency and maintenance. You can see those are current pictures of what our yards look like and except for the sidewalk in the middle. We spent a lot of money. I don't know, we haven't talked about the exact amount, but try to get the yards. I know I brought a little dirt in last year and spread it out and we want our yards back the way that they were. And I know it's been wet, but you know, it's getting close to the middle of March and mowing season's gonna start, so we'd like these projects completed as quickly as we can. The other picture there on the far right is the driveway at three thirteen Lincoln Street. Which to the mayor's and team's credit, they put gravel in and fixed that problem, but if it stays wet on both sides and the large trucks that I've got coming in and out, it's still gonna be an issue if we don't get that drainage solved. Next slide, please. So, our expectation is the property to look just as or better than before the project started. And I hope that's the end result of any project that you guys have started. We expect our yards to be leveled and sodded along with the drain issues fixed and much improved. Uh, any issues with sidewalk cracking or trees due to roots being cut. I know Jacob's got a large tree in his front yard and a lot of the big roots were cut out of it, so what if it doesn't come out this year? What are we gonna do? Next slide, please. So the question that I have for you, Mayor Reed and the city council is how will the communication process for projects improve in the future? When will the projects on Lincoln Street be completed? Yards, driveways, the drainage issue? And who do we contact with issues pertaining to the aforementioned topics concerning the sidewalk project? And again, I look you straight in the face, Mayor Reed. You've been very good at answering my questions and concerns. I know you've got a city to run and as much as you enjoy talking to me, I'm sure there's other people that, that, uh, just need to be directed to. So for me, and the reason, another reason I ask this is that sometimes I've talked to people and they're contractors. And you know, you clarified for me last time, it's either, they don't really work for the city, but in my mind, it is the city. I don't care who it is, contractor or whatever, so again, that's, uh, something we hope to straighten out tonight, whatever it looks like. Next one, I think that's it. Again, we would like to thank you for the time and, uh, again, we're not bashing the sidewalk. We just want those things that were mentioned to be more robust in the future. I have two slides left, but I don't know how I'm running on time. Basically, you don't come to a meeting and complain or without having some suggestions, so you know, communication, on communication, you may have boards in the neighborhood for project updates. You might have flyers or bulletins stuck in the door, door-to-door, face-to-face. And I know that you guys are already working on the social media thing, so again, that's not a have-to, but it's just suggestions. Uh, next slide, please. For the drainage issue, replace the cover at three thirteen with a larger size. Install a cover between our property as I mentioned to drain the ditches on the west side of Lincoln. Improve and increase frequency of cover cleanouts. Uh, we'd really like to see tiles put in those ditches and covered with dirt. I know we've done it on a couple of properties, but mowing those things are terrible, the ditches. I'm on my own ditches. So if you have a riding lawn mower, it's very hard to get them in there. But again, we appreciate the time, you know, I don't know how this works. If we could sit down and you guys answer questions, or if you wanna ask me questions, I'd be glad to.
I appreciate it. Uh, so for the sake of time, if it's okay, what I wanna do is get back with you through an email. Uh, Jim Kelly could speak all night to, uh, you know, the sidewalk plans and some of the things that they've done there. So thank you, uh, for taking the time to put together a presentation and bring it before the council and articulate exactly what your concerns were. Uh, and then bringing off, uh, you know, possible solutions as well, because that's very rare. Most people do want to come and, and turn something like this into a food fight, but you've, you've obviously outlined what your issues were and said, hey, I think these would also work if you'll conserve them. So that means a lot. I appreciate it. I know it means a lot to the council too, because that's not something they see all the time, so I appreciate it. I'll take the hit for the communication. Uh, I'll, do you know that before I got in the chair, uh, that, uh, Wayne McGee got out and he did some door-to-door. This has been about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. Um, and he knocked on the doors, people were home, he spoke with them and told them that there was a sidewalk project coming. Uh, but we could do a better job communicating. I like the idea of the flyers. We're using the water bill on the best we can. I know, uh, the council members have received and we've spoken at city council more than once about where the sidewalks are going before they were getting ready to go. So a lot of that business that you probably say you've missed out on has been taken, taken place here. And on social media, uh, which, you know, you outlined, not the demographic for, but next month, we'll be looking at, uh, a branding and marketing campaign, which is gonna include what's called an e-blast. And if you're on the email, because I know you don't live in town, these are rental houses for you. So I don't know if, are your rental properties, are they, are they paying the water bill or does that water bill go to you?
No, the rental property pays the water.
So even if I send a message out, it's not gonna get to you, my mail. Um, and so really, without a newspaper or without, you know, emailing you directly, I don't, you know, just picking the phone up and say, hey, Jeff, it's Trey again, just want you to know this is going on. There's not really a, a direct line of communication for us to get to you, but that e-blast, which is gonna be proposed next month, would be an opportunity for everybody in this room to get their email on a list. Uh, and then myself or any administrator in town could send out, uh, a branded email that would go out basically, as I can all call to everybody in the community that had their email on that, which I think would be huge. And help, definitely help address some of these issues. Secondly, too, is the water department is looking at, uh, I don't know what it's called, but it's, it's a text program which simply does the same thing similarly, which is if we have a main water break in town, uh, then Jim Kelly or one of the ladies in the water department would be able to send out a mass text. Again, it's gonna go out to everybody in the community that signed up and ping all the phones. It could be as simple as, hey, courtesy, uh, water bill is due in two days or three days or whatever. A lot of people need that reminder. It could be as more complicated as, hey, we're having a major water break on South Center Street. Uh, so be advised or whatever. Or, hey, your water may be tainted for the next three days on, on Lincoln Street or something like that because of X, Y, or Z. So, um, well aware of communication being an issue. It's people who've spoken with me often know that I think it's the number one problem, second to drainage, and that's kinda hard for people to kinda wrap their heads around sometimes, but if we're not communicating, then we can't fix our drainage problem. And so anyways, if it's okay by you, I'd, I'd appreciate the courtesy to sit down and collect all my thoughts and email, send that to you, and I'll address every point that you had in the PowerPoint.
That's fine with me. I have, like I said, I have no doubt that you will. Again, I appreciate the time. And again, on the communication piece, it's, it's not a bash. I mean, it's just, it's just, we just need to have myself included, need to do a better job with it. And I wanna try to get on the proactive side instead of the reactive side.
I appreciate that.
Because I didn't react very well. I apologize to Mr. Kelly wherever he is personally, but I'll do it publicly now. I wouldn't have to camp for the day I come down there, but anyway, um, we'll do better going forward. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Jacob, you have anything on that?
Pretty much, no.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Ms. Anna McClung with our twenty twenty-two executive board report. Hey, Anna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So you notice I titled this, uh, the March ninth, twenty twenty-two reports. We're way ahead.
Spring forward.
Okay, so the beautification and recreation team, um, we're continuing to work. We're gonna launch a business of the month award program this year. It's kind of in line with our yard of the month program we had last year. And so we're going to be looking at downtown businesses that have the best appearance in the street afield and give them award. And we're gonna plan to launch this in May and then go through the summer and probably into through October. Uh, we're also working with the downtown support committee and we're working to develop a plan to place decorative banners along the intersection of front and center streets. Our next beautification team meeting's gonna be March thirtieth at five thirty at the Lono Museum. Uh, tomorrow, we're gonna have our downtown support team meet at noon at, uh, the law office of Tashitary. And they are in the process of completing the application for the Main Street Arkansas program. And they've already received letters of support from our mayor, uh, State Representative Roger Lynch, State Senator Jonathan Disman, and US Congressman Rick Crawford, uh, in support of that. And then, uh, last thing I wanna bring to your attention, we're gonna have our next leadership luncheon on March seventeenth at noon at the Lono Assembly of God. And the speaker's gonna be Dr. Houston Davis, who's the president of the University of Central Arkansas. And in the past, he's, he's had a number of different positions, but he's also served as the director for the National Education Needs Index Project. And this is an initiative that measures educational, economic, and population pressures on the states that influence policy and planning at the local, regional, and national levels. And he also serves on several national advisory groups, uh, on higher education policy. So these luncheons are an opportunity to network as well as listen to some of these, um, executives and learn leadership lessons from them, and hopefully, that will benefit the growth and development of our community.
All right, Chief Edwards is up, the police department report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, for the month of February, we had two hundred thirty, two hundred twenty-four dispatch calls. Of course, you can see where it was thirteen last in, in January. Uh, our nine-one-one calls were down twenty-eight, so we had a total of a hundred and eighty-seven. Made, uh, about twelve fewer felony arrests in the city last month. We've got roughly ten thousand three hundred and eighty dollars in from our immigration and parole inmates for the month. Sitations were up seven. We had a total of twenty-two for the month. And, uh, I'll attribute that to, uh, my officers working more in the school traffic areas, uh, for and after school. Uh, trying to maintain good safe speed for the school. We've had eighty-four reports, which is nineteen less than January. Our radars that we, uh, ordered that came in, and we are installing them in our vehicles. We already have reinstalled. Waiting on the other one to get installed. I do want to, uh, just let you be aware, we had a, a couple of vehicles getting broke into on Kayla and McGee Street one evening last month. And the next night, an individual was caught on a four-wheeler, fled from the officers. That led into another investigation, which ended up, we recovered the property, ninety percent of the property that was stolen uh, from Kayla Lane and McGee Street. Questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Blakenship? Community development report.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Bill, good evening.
Uh, to get started, uh, we did put out three unsafe notices and posted them on homes. Letters were sent out to the property owners. Uh, you've got a list of the properties there. Um, they do have to the fifteenth of this month to respond. Uh, if they do not respond, now, one of the letters I did get back, I will be sending it back out. I did find their actual residence. But we still have time before we have our condemnation meeting. It looks like with two of them, we will be proceeding with the condemnation process. There were five certificates of occupancy, occupancy, I'll give you that in a minute. Uh, issued last month. Uh, excess medical plans were approved and construction should be going uh, within next couple of weeks or next few weeks. And then you've got a list of all the permits that were sold throughout the month last month. Um, that's something I've been keeping track of. We gotta keep track of them by the end of the year anyway, so finally I had to pull up twelve pieces of papers. It's a lot better than going through the whole, yeah. Um, you also have the animal control, uh, list. Uh, what all, is, is there any questions about that? And then code enforcement, uh, just the regular hangers that we put out each month. Usually doesn't take much, put out the hangers and they could take care of it. That's all I've got to report this month. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question. Certificates of occupancy, what does that mean?
That means, uh, projects were completed, homes were built, and we went through all the process. And at the end of the job, once all the inspections are done, uh, they have to get a certificate in order to, for the, to file the residence.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next up's Chief Whittenburg with the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're having us tonight. I've got our totals for last month. We had fifteen EMS related calls and twelve fire-related calls. Any questions on either side?
I wanna add something real quick. Uh, Justin and I had a conversation this morning from a, uh, nursing consultant in North Central Arkansas. And, um, and so leadership takes many different roles, and this one is me telling everybody to wash their hands, because Arkansas is, uh, yet to have a case of, of COVID nineteen. And um, and so leadership takes many different roles, and this one is me telling everybody to wash your hands because Arkansas is uh yet to have a case of, of COVID nineteen coronavirus. But we're surrounded. We got them all, we got them right where we want them, all around us. And uh, and so what we're gonna do is, uh, Justin, you know, when I look at our first responders, they, if anybody who has a responsibility to not be a carrier is the police and, and fire. Because they're dealing with elderly folks all day long and people who are uh subject to cuts and bruises and, and open wounds. So. Uh, he's gonna lead a charge, and he's gonna go visit all of our nursing homes and any of our uh, of our properties or, or places in town that have, might have uh immune deficient. Patients or people, and just kinda get the word out, um, and put some flyers and make it more or less an education campaign, but let them know that he's here if they have questions. So that's kinda what we're doing at the most local, basic level. Um, I don't know how robust it is, but we are putting attention towards it. Uh, and I'm sure everybody who works underneath the mayor's position is tired of me sending out emails and saying, hey, wash your hands. So off, off my, off my soapbox. Thank you. Alright, Mr. Roy Don Lewis, parks and mosquito.
Well, I've just got one thing tonight. Out there at the concession, the new concession stand with, I took Mayor Reed out there and we decided we, we need to add more concrete. From the pads outside the pill, new pillars. We'd like to, uh, it's like seven and a half feet on the south side, five foot on the north side, and five foot, more foot on the west side, east side. That comes up, I told uh Scott Key, the contractor out there, and it came up to nine thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And the reason why we wanna do this, it makes it a lot more simpler for handicapped to get around on outside pillars and to, to get to field two and three and around there.
I take a motion to approve. We have that in the budget.
We could, I, I got the money in, in contingent to take care of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the nine thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents for the project.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mike Brown with community center report.
For the month of February at the center, our membership has been, been holding pretty steady. I think we're only down six or seven, so that's, that's real good. Don't have anything else I'm asking for, but uh some, just for some general information. Uh, member of the month program, which I think we've been doing probably about three years now, uh, Mr. Rodney Bass was our member of the month. Uh, pickleball, uh, with the, uh, Antoine's been doing an outstanding job getting people interested in pickleball. And last Thursday night, I think we had forty to forty-five folks show up to, to play. Uh, so every Thursday night from, I think it was six thirty to eight thirty, uh, come out and the court was full. Uh, come out and learn how to play pickleball and hopefully, you know, they can play it on the tennis court here. Uh, so it's, it's growing real well. Uh, I've been talking with uh Greg Thompson, he's a golf pro. And a few years ago, we had a hooker kid on golf program, and we've got thirty or forty kids' golf clubs sets that uh were restarting the program. Uh, what I'm getting to is spring breaks coming up and I want this to be a, a no-phone spring, uh, spring break. Uh, if that's possible. Uh, we're having sw- swim lessons, two days, and these will be free swim lessons uh for the kids. We're having a two-day basketball camp, uh, which I'll be there helping and we'll get, hopefully we get that from the, to, to help. Uh, and movie day, we had movie day, uh, the last Friday of spring break, uh. Uh, we'll play some kind of Disney movie, uh, just something to get the kids active, uh, you know, during spring break.
What's the charge for the spring break program?
Most of it's free. Basketball camps are gonna be five dollars for the, uh, both days, for, for the two days. So we just want the kids uh to get out, but I know what mine did. They, they were on computers in at home all day, so. We're gonna offer uh more things for them to do.
May I ask questions?
Um, I have a question. On these free uh activities that you offer the children, do you send notes home through the school, letting their parents know about them?
We'll, we'll get it.
Is that, how else do you notify people about that?
Facebook.
Facebook. Okay. I just think it's a great program. I think you've done a wonderful job at the community center. And you've just created so many programs for all these children.
I wanna, I wanna keep them, and we've got so much, uh, like tennis court. Been talking with someone to come in and if kids don't know how to play something, they're probably not gonna do it. If you, uh, if you give them tennis racket and some tennis balls and you'll probably see some uh interest in it. That'll help the school out, 'cause they hadn't had a tennis program in, in a while. Uh, a golf program, even though we don't have a golf course, you know, you can still get in the yard and get a ball. And we're still taking, um, still taking donations.
When, when is that going to be? I've had a couple of people ask me about that. When is that sale gonna be?
Well, we, we suppose it'd been two weeks ago.
That's what I thought.
But we didn't, we, we didn't have that much, but a guy brought in some uh golf clubs. And then in turn, somebody brought in some uh bow and arrows and tennis shoes.
So you're still accepting donations?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah, still accepting, and I think, uh, we gave the golf clubs to, to kids, so. Uh, if you got anything, we just wanna get it in the hands of the people that's gonna use it.
How are you, how are you asking people for those donations? The same way?
Facebook.
Just Facebook, okay.
Are you, are you posting it, Mike, where people can share that request and do you know?
I don't know how to do Facebook. I tell somebody to do it and.
You hope for doing it.
Well, if they will do that.
I'm glad I was the only one.
If, if they will do that, we can all share it and try to get it out, but, but you're doing a great job. Thank you for all your hard work for these kids.
Mike, while you're up there too, I just want the council to know, uh, he was gonna bring before us uh, uh, the pool pack. Okay, and I've asked him to, to kinda delay that request. It's a huge purchase. Um, it's gonna take up a, a large portion of his budget. But we've known it's been coming down the pipe. He's, he's done his homework, he's got his estimates. But at the same time, we've got the contract that we're working with the Arkansas Office of Energy, and I didn't want us to bypass any maybe additional incentives or considerations that their department might have in terms of high efficient energy type of. Equipment, okay? So, given that really the winter time is really, we need to get the pool pack purchased before the winter time. And given that we are at the same time overlay with this contractor asking, just kinda wait. So before the summer, the goal is gonna be to get that pool pack purchased and installed. Before like September, October, because the moisture is really the big issue. When it's cold outside, it comes in. And we gotta have, make sure that that pool is uh venting itself properly uh through the winter time. So just so you guys understand in terms of timeline where we're at with that. Thanks, Mike. Anything else? Alright. Alright, Mr. Jim Kelly with the public works update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Lingo for coming out and voicing his concerns. We appreciate any feedback on any project being done. With that, we do have a list of areas and sidewalks that are creating adverse conditions, and they are gonna be addressed before the job comes to completion as well. For our monthly report, a pretty standard report, uh, shows we're a little bit busier on the street department side of it. Put out quite a bit of asphalt, uh, started cleaning ditches, which, uh, most of that's gonna show up on next month's report. We're actually dry for a little bit. Other than that, it's just, you don't have any questions about the board. One of the goals we've got going ahead for the street department is focusing on asphalt repair. I got, I've had several of those brought in. We've put out at least forty tons already. I'm not even sure what we put out this month. But we're gonna be focusing on that, uh, mopping ditches. And addressing tile or culvert around town that need to be replaced, along with regrading some of the ditches where those need to be replaced at. That's gonna be a big focus for us this year. What's on there first? The uh bed or the?
Purchase a bed for a new work truck.
I have three quotes prepared to purchase a bed for the truck you approved at the last council meeting. Uh, the lowest. It goes to Street Landers. And it is a price of six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion on? Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
That truck's been ordered. We're waiting on it to be built, and then that'll be put on thereafter. I figure it'll be probably another two months before we receive and actually detect this vehicle. The other item I need to hide is permission to advertise to sell the meters that we've replaced. I have approximately nineteen hundred uh water meters, and I just wanna advertise so we can get. Still bids from uh competitors to purchase these meters.
Make a motion that we prepare sell bid process for the water meters?
Second. Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion or questions on it?
Yeah, just a brief one, just for my education. Um, are there other municipalities that purchase these, or is there like a vendor market that refurbishes them and then makes them available or?
Most of them that are interested are the ones who refurbish them, and usually they will sell them to another utility. Uh, there might be some smaller communities that might be interested. I can get the word to Arkansas Rural Water Association, and they can also bid on them as well. So we're not gonna limit who actually, an individual can bid if they want to.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? That motion carries.
And then we had a change order. This is, I don't, I don't have my copy of that change order, but actually if the final pay is.
Here you go.
This is for diamond construction, which they've completed the job, and this is basically setting me up on everything at the end of it. Final pay estimate is for two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Where's that at?
Yeah, I'm looking for it too.
Last, like the last page.
Say that pass again.
Two hundred and five thousand, sixty-nine and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
One more time, for the ones in the back.
Two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight.
I take a motion to approve the change order number three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion on it? Any questions?
Yeah, just briefly, Jim, in your opinion, um, you explained to us early on that because of the, kinda the nature of these type projects, there's a lot of unknowns. That's why you have unit costs in there as part of their bid.
Uh, yes, sir.
So, um, just in your opinion, how, um, with, we've had three change orders roughly in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. Did that come out about the way you would, would expect in terms of either defining a contingency or just a project of this type? I, I know that, that's a real tough way to say, so more just, more of the subjective perspective from you.
I think we're at five percent on this one. Which is not a, a huge overture. Um, I would anticipate what's headed anywhere around three hundred thousand a minimum for a contingency here. Uh, and, and the break order, or the breakdown here is kinda showing you what items we went over on, and then also something about it we went under on as well. So I mean, it kinda goes both ways. And actually that, the final pay estimate was the two hundred and five thousand, but the final change order was on a hundred thousand.
Any other questions or concerns? Alright, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Sir, do you have anything else for us? Thank you, Jim. Alright, next is a, a resolution for the final amendment of last year's budget, and uh, that's Mr. Philip House, sir. So you've got anything you wanna add?
No, just by way of explanation, uh, you might remember that, as we did last year, the uh. There is a requirement, once all the adjustments and final numbers are in on the two thousand nineteen budget, it has to reflect what the numbers were for the actual year, and we have to approve that, that final budget. So it's big for the year of two thousand nineteen. So that's what's in your packet, and that's what's representative of, of the year two thousand nineteen. The final budget tracks very well with what was estimated to end of the third quarter. As always, it's a little difficult to look at just each department and see, but if you look at the underlying accounts, as to where they get their income and you see uh what those bank balances are and what those uh. Increases are in many cases in the bank balances over the course of the year, uh, it was a good year in about the budget. As stated here, it looks good.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to pass or put, uh, resolution three-one-two thousand and twenty on the floor.
So. Second.
Motion's made in seconded.
Resolution three dash one dash twenty twenty, a resolution amending the two thousand nineteen operating budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, appropriating the various amounts herein and for other purposes. Whereas the city treasurer respectfully requests that this governing body accept the proposed budget amendments to the two thousand nineteen operating budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, attached here to as exhibit A. And incorporated herein by this reference. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Lone Oak, Arkansas, that section one, the budget amendments attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by this reference to the two thousand nineteen operating budget. Are hereby adopted, and the final two thousand nineteen operating budget should reflect the same. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage.
Take a motion to accept?
Take a motion to accept.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion on it?
I have a question, Phillip. What is the GCS or GC S one cent?
Uh, that's, that's county one cent money.
County one?
County, that's, it's general court, one cent money.
General court.
That, that's one of those county one cent funds that was sent several years ago, and the, uh, if you remember, those one cent accounts. Uh, have been set for some time, but are those also that can be changed from time to time. There's a whole, if you go to the budget and look at the uh county one cent sheet, you'll find that, and it breaks down each one cent account that comes from two counties and how it's split.
Alright, any other questions? Take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? That motion carries. No old business, uh, new business first on the agenda. Uh, if there's no objection. Uh, was to ask the city council to accept uh economic developer contract, which has been in your, in your packet. Uh, past few hours, there was a request to actually amend that contract, uh, with some more, I'll say specificity.
Specificity?
Specificity, Ms. Alice. Always swooping in to save me. Alright, and so if there's no objection, what we'll do is bring it before the city council next month. Alright, and that will be tabled until April. Thanks. Let's see here. Next on the agenda then is ordinance seven sixty. This is an approval for the Grumpy Rabbit private club license, and we do need a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion so moved.
I second it.
Ordinance number seven sixty, an ordinance adopted pursuant to act one 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 two of two thousand and seventeen, approving the application of Grumpy Rabbit Inc. for a private club to be located at one oh five west front street, Lone Oak, Lone Oak County, Arkansas. Whereas act one 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 two of two thousand and seventeen requires applicants for a private club license to obtain approval of the governing body of the city where the private club is to be located. And whereas Grumpy Rabbit Inc. has requested city council, the city of Lone Oak, uh, Lone Oak authorize a restaurant private club at one oh five west front street, Lone Oak, Lone Oak County, Arkansas. And whereas the city council of Lone Oak, Arkansas, has considered the request of Grumpy Rabbit Inc., and finds the request will promote the public convenience and advantage to provide community hospitality, and to increase, and an increase in sales tax revenue to the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, article one, the request of Grumpy Rabbit Inc. for approval of a private club license in conjunction with a restaurant at one oh five west front street, Lone Oak, Arkansas, be, and it hereby is approved by the city council of the city of Lone Oak. Article two, pursuant to act one 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 two of two thousand and seventeen, Grumpy Rabbit Inc. is hereby authorized to file a private club application with the department of finance and administration, alcohol beverage control division, for the location at one oh five west front street, Lone Oak, Lone Oak County, Arkansas. A copy of this ordinance shall be provided to the alcohol beverage control division, department of finance and administration, as evidence of the city council approval. Article three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Article four, as this ordinance concerns a matter affecting the lives and property of the citizens of Lone Oak, specifically the right of community hospitality among the citizens, and emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, from and after the date of its passage to approval.
Motion to accept the first reading?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion before we take it to a vote? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant is a client of mine, so I'll abstain from this vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
He's gonna abstain. Ryan Biles will abstain from the vote. Anything else? Take a motion to accept the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, I'll take a motion to suspend the rules, second.
To suspend the rules, second and third reading, title only.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Ordinance number seven sixty, an ordinance adopted pursuant to act one 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 two of two thousand and seventeen, approving the application of Grumpy Rabbit Inc. for a private club to be located at one oh five west front street, Lone Oak, Lone Oak County, Arkansas.
Motion to accept second, third reading?
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll take a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number seven sixty.
Need a second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, and I'll take a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Congratulations. You do have, uh, thanks, okay. Alright, next on the agenda is ordinance seven sixty-one, that is for short-term financing. That's to allow the city, uh, short-term financing, uh, through First State Bank, uh, for the concession stand.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to put ordinance number seven sixty-one on the floor.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Ordinance number seven sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, to obtain financing from First State Bank for the completion of the restrooms and concessions building at the Lone Oak ballparks, directing and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or deputy clerk to execute the documents necessary to obtain financing for this project from First State Bank pursuant to an amendment, number seventy-eight to the Arkansas Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash seventy-eight dash one oh one et cetera, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council for the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, the city, is authorized and empowered under the provisions of amendment number seventy-eight, to the Arkansas Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash seventy-eight dash one oh one et cetera, the act, to enter into short-term financing in order to acquire, construct, install, or rent rental pro, real property or tangible personal property, having an expected useful life of more than one year. And whereas the city has obtained a favorable loan proposal and rate from First State Bank in Lone Oak, Arkansas, to secure financing through a fixed rate loan of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with an interest rate of three point one four nine percent per annum for a period of sixty months, with a monthly principal and interest payment of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, to finance the remaining costs of completing the new restrooms and concessions building at the Lone Oak ballparks. Whereas the city council desires to utilize the provisions of amendment seventy-eight and the act, and it is necessary to pass an ordinance complying with those laws in order to effect said purchase. And now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city, number one, the city council finds that the restroom and concessions building to be constructed will have a useful life of more than one year, and that the principal amount to be financed does not exceed five percent of the assessed value of taxable property located within the city as determined by the last tax assessment, as required by Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash seventy-eight dash one oh three A six. Section two, the restrooms and concessions building shall be completed at the cost of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which shall be financed through this loan from First State Bank. Number three, the city is authorized to enter into a short-term financing agreement with First State Bank pursuant to amendment seventy-eight and the act for the purpose of financing the cost of the completion of the new restrooms and concessions building through a fixed rate loan of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an interest rate of three point one four nine percent per annum, for a period of sixty months with a monthly principal and interest payment of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Number four, in order to effectuate said financing, the mayor and, and city clerk, or deputy city clerk, are hereby authorized to, A, execute all such documents as are necessary to effectuate the financing as set forth herein, and B, secure short-term financing for the restrooms and concessions building from First State Bank pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash seventy-eight dash one oh five, providing said financing documents are consistent with the terms of this ordinance amendment seventy-eight and the act. Number five, the city clerk or deputy clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file at the city hall as part of the minutes of the meeting at which this ordinance is adopted, copies of the purchase and loan documents which shall remain available for the, for the inspection by any interested person. Number six, provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if for any reason any portion of this ordinance shall be held invalid, such invalidity shall not, in no way affect the remaining portions hereof, which shall be and remain in full force and effect. Number seven, the city is in immediate need of completing the restrooms and concessions building for which construction has begun, therefore an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, the same shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication.
Motion to accept the first reading?
So, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll take a motion to suspend the rules, second, third reading, title only.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion made and seconded.
Ordinance number seven hundred and sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, to obtain financing from First State Bank for the completion of the restrooms and concessions building at the Lone Oak ballparks, directing and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or deputy clerk to execute the documents necessary to obtain financing for this project from First State Bank, pursuant to amendment number seventy-eight to the Arkansas Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated, uh, section fourteen dash seventy-eight dash one oh one et cetera, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion to accept second, third reading, title only.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll take a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion's made. Do I have a second? Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to accept the emergency call.
So, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Alright, next on the list is resolution, uh, for Main Street Arkansas program support. And so there's been a whole lot of work, you know, one of the first things that was, uh, discussed at some of these long, like twenty twenty-two meetings, three years ago when I came to town, was how can we get back on the Main Street Arkansas charter, and separate our downtown area from, from that of, you know, any other, essentially rural downtown in, in Arkansas. Um, you know, Main Street has a lot of, uh, help and support and advice, and it's a really, really good thing to actually have that badge of honor for any community. And so, um, there are some motions in action right now to be competitive. You have, I mean, this is a, a, a application process. Communities have to go through, and you really have to have your stuff in line, and have your homework done. And so, real quickly, I'm gonna give it to Ryan, give it to, uh, Ryan Biles, and let him speak to some of the work that's kinda gone into this, and what this means for the community.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I'd invite Suzette to be part of this as well. She and I are both members of the committee that's currently known as the Downtown Lone Oak Support Committee. There's been a whole lot of volunteer work that's gone into, um, resurrecting what was Main Street Lone Oak, which was in existence for several years, uh, back in the nineties. Um, it's a nonprofit, and it had a contract for services with the city of Lone Oak to, uh, conduct, among other services, economic development. Main Street is a national program. Arkansas has an affiliate program called Main Street Arkansas that is, um, administered by the Department of Arkansas Parks, Heritage, and Tourism. They have been working with this for about three years now to prepare us for this application process. Very graciously, director has been here, um, in an early meeting. Um, Main Street has a philosophy of, of, they call the four points of Main Street, which is economic revitalization, uh, design emphasis, programming, and coordination. So, there's a committee, uh, of about twelve folks or more, uh, each who have a certain strength, who have been part of this revitalization effort for several years. So, now we are, uh, creating an application that will be submitted this month, and if the council chooses to adopt this resolution, it'd be, uh, tremendous and, uh, truthfully a necessary step in, um, making sure that our application is legitimate in the eyes of the state, and so.
And they have been here to visit a couple of times, been in and out of the stores downtown to look at all the historical value that we have, and they are very excited about what Lone Oak has to offer for part of this Main Street, so with that, we're very excited as well, and.
I think our downtown makes us incredibly unique. If you compare us, uh, with Jacksonville and Cabot and some of the other, uh, communities in the area, who are looking for a heart of our community, and that's what we have downtown, is we have a heart, um, and, and we're just looking to add some life and love and opportunity to it. Letters of support, I know I've written one, can you speak to who else has written?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we requested and have received, and will provide copies of letters of support from, um, state senator dismaying, uh, state representative Roger Lynch and Congressman Rick Crawford.
Alright, with that, then I'll take a motion to put resolution three two twenty twenty on the floor. Motion's made and seconded.
Resolution three dash two dash twenty twenty, a resolution supporting the Main Street Arkansas program. Whereas the Main Street Arkansas program has been established to assist cities and towns in developing a private public, uh, developing a public private effort to revitalize urban neighborhood and traditional central business district, commercial areas. And whereas the Main Street Arkansas program will accept, accept cities or towns to participate in the Arkansas Downtown Network Program and receive technical assistance from Main Street Arkansas. Whereas the city of Lone Oak desires to participate in the Arkansas Downtown Network Program. Now therefore let it be resolved by the city council of the city of Lone Oak, section one, that the city of Lone Oak endorses the submission of this application and agrees to participate in the development and financial support of the local Arkansas Downtown Network Program. Section two endorses the goal of economic revitalization of the designated Main Street District within the context of the preservation and rehabilitation of his, its, of its historic commercial buildings, recognizing that the Main Street program is one of many economic and community development tools utilized by a locale and that it's location-specific. Section three recognizes that a commitment to commercial district revitalization is an ongoing process requiring ongoing attention, community support, and involvement, and a full public-private partnership.
I'll take a motion to accept resolution three twenty, uh, three two twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Big step for us.
Thank you all. Good all your work.
Alright, uh, briefly, the next item is a, a request by the council to sell, uh, some extra chairs and tables by sealed bid process. We have, uh, don't have a total tally, it's probably sixty tables, this table you see right here. Knock that microphone. But there's about, I don't know, probably forty, about forty or forty-five sitting right here behind us, uh, and we were wanting to keep, we had a nonprofit, uh, reach out to us, and say, hey, we're in need of some tables. Uh, and we said, I'd love for you to have them, for us to do this, we gotta go through the process, and so that's what's kinda stimulated this, but to be honest with you, we don't have an immediate need for them, and so it really would be in the city's best interest to, to offload them to somebody who could, um, provide a sealed bid. But, uh, we've got a whole, whole slew of chairs and tables back here, um, and they're, again, all the tables look just like this, and the chairs look like the ones that the administrators are sitting in on the wall over there. Um, and we have currently no plan or good use for them, so it's, it's really a good thing to kinda have a suitor for them. Uh, we are gonna keep four tables and ten chairs for the public works department. So, what I'm asking the city council is, uh, to sell off those chairs and tables to sealed bid.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Would council members be available to put in a solid bid for those items, or are we?
I think you can. Any, any other questions or concerns?
Will they have to be purchased in one lot, or can people purchase?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be one lot, and we'll have a, so before Regina releases that, uh, bid, what do you call it, advertisement essentially, it'll be a full tally of, uh, full inventory of what we actually have, and anybody who wants to, you will have the opportunity to come and look. Anything else? I got a motion, uh, and seconded, I believe. I'll tell you what, I'll take a motion.
Second.
Motion's made?
I'll, I'll let it second.
I got it.
Motion and second. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, lastly, uh, we have an, we need to pass an ordinance, uh, that establishes a video service fee, and this was a suggestion, uh, from local government services, Greg Fender. If you guys remember, we, last month entered into a contract with him in Delonica, Georgia, to give us a franchise fee audit, or a franchise audit in our right of way. Uh, and he has pushed this information through us and said, we need to get this passed. Regina, do you have anything you wanna add? No, but you should have a new one. We pass those out. The old one had, uh, a reference to Cabot, Arkansas, which was a blanket ordinance.
There's some up here.
The new one actually has Lone Oak written on it, so.
What, what we found out, talking to Greg, is that anybody can get a cable franchise and run it through your right of way if they go through the state process instead of actually franchising through the city. If they franchise with the city, then we can charge them a franchise fee, which is up to five percent. But if they go through the state, if we don't have these ordinance, then we don't get any revenue off of them working on our right of way. So, this'll protect us either way.
So, this is something moving forward that, not something that we're not doing already.
It's not retroactive, no, it'll, it'll be forward on.
What technologies does it apply to? Is it, is it defined by cable? Is it defined by technology?
Video service only.
But video can be delivered by multiple methods, so I just didn't know if it includes this. This, this doesn't specify if it's a cable technology or internet-based, or?
I think it, there's an act that defines what we can charge them fees on.
Okay.
The state.
Is it nominally known as a cable franchise, cable TV franchise?
It may be called video service.
Okay.
But most of them will run fiber optics, but not video.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to, uh, put ordinance seven sixty-two on the floor.
So moved.
Second. Motion's made and seconded.
Ordinance number seven sixty-two, ordinance establishing a video service provider fee. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated twenty-three dash nineteen dash two oh six permits the city to establish a video service provider fee in an amount not in excess of five percent of a video service provider's gross revenues. And whereas the ci, the council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to set the video service provider fee rate for the city at the maximum rate allowed by Arkansas Code annotated twenty-three dash nineteen dash two oh six. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, and council duly assembled as follows. Number one, the council as the municipal governing body hereby sets the video service provider fee at five percent of gross revenues consistent with Arkansas Code annotated twenty-three dash nineteen dash two oh six subsection D two A. Number two, the five percent video service provider fee shall be imposed on all video service providers doing business in the city which hold a state-issued certificate of franchise authority. Number three, the council hereby authorizes the mayor and the city staff to provide notice to all video service providers of the video service provider fee as may be required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be effective from the date of final reading and adoption.
Motion to accept the first reading?
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, I'll take a motion to suspend the rules, second and third reading, title only. Motion's made and seconded.
Ordinance number seven sixty-two, ordinance establishing a video service provider fee.
I'll take a motion to accept the, uh, reading, second, third reading, title only.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I'll take a motion to, uh, for the emergency clause. I just got one in there. No, no, I'm sorry, there's not for that visitor. The net ordinance is passed. Thank you. Alright, last couple things, uh, motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, real briefly, I've got one quick announcement for the public, and then I'll open the floor just very quickly for anybody who has anything they want to speak about. April 1st, the census day is coming down quick. It means a lot to our community that everybody gets counted, that you count yourself, that you hold your neighbors accountable. It's the first year ever that the census is going to be online. Very, very simple, it's going to take about 10 minutes of your time. It will literally be probably the biggest thing you do in the next 10 years for this community. Imagine writing a check every single year for $2,500, or $25,000 over the course of the decade. That is what your participation means for this community in terms of streets and schools and healthcare and all the things, and it's our money. I've been reminded that this is our money to reclaim from the federal government. And if we don't count ourselves, we leave money on the table. It's very important. Is there anything for the public? Does anybody like to say anything? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to thank the City Council and the community for the support from Grumpy Rabbit. And I have some boards, display boards, if anybody wants to take a peek after the meeting. I have one here, she has questions, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just more. That's fine.
I want to thank you on behalf of the Lone Oak County Library System for everything that you do for this system. I don't know if you're aware, but we have provided continuous library service to Lone Oak County since 1940. So that's a long time. We're currently closed due to renovations, but we will open back up on March the 18th. First thing that we're going to do is to invite you to come in, because we have changed a lot of things. And I want to specifically thank Ryan Viles, who's on our board, and he represents Lone Oak very well, because he just represents your population area. One of the first things we're going to do is we will have public access computers, two of them, ready for people who want to come in and reply online to the census. They will be preloaded, all they have to do is sit at the chair, and the link is there, and takes them right to the census. So we are really on board. And then I want to thank especially all of the department heads, but especially Chief Edwards, because some, once in a while, we'll have to have the police department come over and help us with something. They're always so professional and courteous. Chief Wittenberg, we've had to have him come over and say, exactly how many people can we allow in this library building? We're not going to call him during summer reading. Mr. Jim Kelly, who has helped us tremendously when we were having sewer line problems, helped us to pinpoint those and did, went out of his way to come by and run a camera up and get us a new sewer line from the street to the, to the building, and then we took it from there and had the four jack cameras. I want to thank you very much, you have a lot to be proud of in Lone Oak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Ms. Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Those of you that know me, know me and my 10 siblings, my nine siblings come from a very diverse situation in our childhood. And what we have been doing, my sister wrote a book about 10 years ago that said Murder in the Eyes of the Children. Talks about how my father took my mother's life, shot me in the process, you know, and also how we overcame. And so we've been traveling around to different schools, different churches, and been putting out a message that you too can overcome. Matter of fact, Friday we did Lone Oak Middle School and had a real good showing from all the children and everything. We have not put anything on Facebook to publicly announce that I was coming, I'm waiting on some help, Ryan. But, but we want to open ourselves up as a family. We don't charge anything, but what we do ask is to let my sister display to sell her books, which is approximately about $10 a piece, so it ain't nothing. So that's, just want to put that out there.
All right, that's all we've got, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Any objections? All right, thank you.